2023 Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a moment of silence. We can honor our wonderful example of a servant, a public servant, and a leader, past First Lady, Rosalynn Carter. And then we've got a moment of silence from Supervisor Crandall.
Yes. Elder from Scotts Valley Band of Pomont Indians, Joyce Arnold. She's also the daughter of Vice Chairman Jesse Gonzalez and Miguel Gonzalez of Scotts Valley. She passed on November 17th. The funeral was yesterday. She leaves behind lots of grandchildren, lots of family. She's not only a member of Scotts Valley, but she has connections to Hoplin, Redwood Valley, Coyote Valley, Round Valley. So like a lot of elders have these connections. She also was a very renowned basket maker as well. And so the, our Pomont community loses another one of those resources. So yeah, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Joyce and her family.
Wendy, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, every being, and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda?
I do not have any extra items.
Okay. We'll move to approve the consent agenda. Is there, are there any items that need to be pulled? Any, does the public, public have any items that they'd like to pull? Not seeing any in the Zoom room. So I will close the public and bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And looks like we'll have a couple of minutes before our next timed item. So we have. We can go to 7.4. Consideration of the following Advisory Board Appointment: Emergency Medical Care Committee. And this is to appoint Najia Sadiq to EMCC. Any comments?
I'd just like to point out a, I'm sure it's an inadvertent error on the staff memorandum saying that this would be an appointment to first five Lake County, but I do believe the agenda itself is captioned appropriately and the appointment would be made to EMCC. So on that understanding, I would-
I'm going to open it up to the public first. Any comments from the public? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then I will bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve Najia Sadiq as a member of the Emergency Medical Care Committee, assigned to a seat for, looks like EMS representative?
I think it's hospital representative.
Yeah, this is a complicated committee. I don't have the roster in front of me, so I don't have all the categories in front of me.
I know that's what it says on the application is hospital representation. Not sure if that's-
Okay.
-the appropriate term.
The ER?
ER representative or hospital?
ER affiliated medical, because we don't have any, we don't have any for that category. And she, she said that she-
So E, what's the, what's the category name?
ER affiliated medical care coordinator.
All right, so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we will go to our 906 item, public input. We have anyone in the chambers who'd like to give public input? Anyone in the Zoom room? Not seeing any. Sure, come on up to the microphone if you've got, are you here to speak on anything that's on the agenda?
Yes, on the, the funding for the Pomont statue.
It passed. Consent.
Oh.
It was on consent.
Bye.
Thank you so much for joining us today. Okay, then I will close public comment and we can move on to our star of the morning, Gizmo, our 6.2907 a.m. pet of the week. Gizmo, you're up.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you over her. Good morning, my name is Officer Haley Downey. I'm with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is my very talkative partner, Gizmo. Gizmo is an eight-week-old pit mix puppy. She is completely brindle and white. Gizmo has been in the foster with a couple of our employees, including myself, for the last three and a half weeks. Gizmo is officially available for adoption. We have had her in homes with both cats and large dogs. She gets along with small dogs that we've had in our office. We think that she'd do really well in just about any environment. We've also started already working on her potty training and that kind of stuff. That being said, she still is a puppy, so there will still be some hiccups. But we have already started working on that for whoever decides to adopt her. If anybody wants to come and meet Gizmo, she's currently hanging out in our front office at 4949 Hellbush Drive. Or if somebody would like to request an application, they can go ahead and give us a call, 707-263-0278.
Well, thank you for joining us and thank you for fostering. I know that's above and beyond your job description.
I had her for two weeks and now another employee has her and she's doing way better than I did, so.
Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful day.
All right. 6.3, our 908 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Commanding Billy Roberson for Heroic Actions in Saving the Life of a Teenager at Lakeport Unified School District. And I'm going to have Wendy come up with me. Whereas Billy Roberson is a Deputy Probation Officer, assigned as a School Resource Officer at Lakeport Unified School District. And whereas on November 14th, 2023, in the course of his duties, he was made aware of a teenager who had lost consciousness, stopped breathing, and appeared to be suffering from an overdose. Whereas not only he took immediate action and heroic action to provide for the teenager's medical needs by administering Narcan, but ensured emergency medical personnel were called and that the scene was sufficiently controlled so that emergency medical personnel would immediately be able to take any necessary additional action upon their arrival. And whereas actions like those taken by Deputy Probation Officer Roberson go well beyond the bounds of his usual job duties, and his unsightful and immediate work had immeasurable and life-altering effects on not only the teenager, but all of those connected to her. And whereas this display of decisive and heroic behavior under great pressure is a shining example for all Lake County residents, and the effects of it will be felt socially and economically for years to come. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend Deputy Probation Officer Billy Roberson for his remarkable insight and efforts in saving a life, and by virtue of this recognition, extend the deep and heartfelt thanks of Lake County communities to Officer Roberson for his great professionalism and extraordinary service. Passed and adopted this 28th date of November 25. We wanted to bring you in here. You, your, your actions are legendary around the county and you have changed the life of one person, their family, given this person a second chance. And we have incredible staff that work here in Lake County and in the probation department, and you are a shining example of that. And we just want to express our sincerest gratitude for this. Thank you.
I just, I just want to say thank you to everybody else. If it was anybody else put in my position at probation, they would have done the same thing. So like I said, I just want to say thank you to everybody at probation.
He's right, we do have an incredible team at probation and he's just one shining example of that. And we appreciate everything you do every day, Billy. Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public? Any comments from the team? Now we're going to take a picture. Anyone from the board?
So real quick, I just want to talk about the importance of having a Student Resource Officer in our schools. The fact that probation has been providing SROs for, I don't know how many years, but since I've been here, that's been the case, is amazing. And I hope that we can continue doing that. There are certain schools that still require filling a position. It's difficult to already staff our departments, let alone find SROs. But I just want to highlight the importance of having those individuals in our school sites to provide not just a connection with the youth, but also to provide the help and assistance when it's needed at the time of most importance. So thank you very much for being there. Thank you for your actions and great job.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, you know, good work. And it's very hard to come by these days for people that want to serve. So not just you, but all of you here. A lot of people don't want to do this work anymore. It's, it's just very, you know, rare for people to, you know, serve their community with either probation or law enforcement or anything of that nature. And so I, you know, I appreciate your humility, but you did do a great thing. And, and that lets me know too, what kind of person you are with the hum, you know, the humbleness that you bring. And so with so many people passing from this, you know, this epidemic, you know, it's just, we're grateful to have you all in these schools and on the streets to help with this, you know. So a lot of people just want to record and hang out and watch and then post it and then point a finger at somebody who didn't do something. So you stepped to the, to the plate. Thank you and thank you all.
And if I can just add, we're here to celebrate you today and this proclamation does that. And congratulations on a job well done. But I think one question I may have later down the road is, thank goodness, we had Narcan available in trained hands to administer. And so I think there's probably a success story I can take out of that, but there may be additional policy work that we need to get Narcan in more hands and in more people that aren't trained probation officers necessarily and, and stuff like that. So I just want to take that as, this is a powerful example of not just your, you know, your bravery in, in the sense of administering that, but just a teachable moment that we're unfortunately going to face similar situations on other campuses and in other settings outside the schools. And we all need to get better and understand how Narcan should be made widely available so that it can be applied in an emergency situation very timely. And that's what happened in this instance. So thank you for today's lesson and I do think we have additional lessons down the road to learn.
Yeah, just want to follow up and say thank you very much for your actions. Saving a life is so important in these days and especially with, just as you said, the Narcan. But thank you for acting. Thank you for being who you are. Greatly appreciated.
Forgot it was there.
Thank you all for joining us today. Okay, our 6.4 item, 9:15 a.m., Consideration of Lake County Resource Conservation District's Annual Report. And we have Dr. Lyons, if you'd like to come on up and have a seat here.
Good morning. I'm Harry Lyons and I'm President of the Board of Directors of the Lake County Resource Conservation District. And we are six board members and eight part-time employees who are dedicated to locally-led efforts at sustainable use of our natural resources in Lake County. We are a state special district. Our head is in state, but our heart is in Lake County. And I want to thank you right off the bat, the county, for assisting us and asking for our assistance both. So I did present a slideshow, I did send in a slideshow. Is it available? I also have it in a thumb drive if you need it. I'm going to start, my, my second slide will be on the money. And last year, our situation, our financial situation was so awful that I wandered around trying to learn how to disband a special district, a resource conservation district. I talked to surrounding districts and to the local area Agency Formation Council. And fortunately, no one would help me. And so we struggled along and we're, we're coming out of a financial dip. And so here you'll see on this slide, you'll see our total budget for, for, for the surrounding years. And at 21, 22, we got down to about $150,000. But we have profited from the Inflation Reduction Act and many of the grants that were made available through that and also for fire protection and resilience work. And so our financial situation is looking a little better since I'll have, I want to specifically thank the county and the people of Lake County for the county tax contribution. So that second column there is a constant input of readily usable dollars. But you can see also that most of our income comes from grants, federal grants, state grants, and contracts with, with the County of Lake. If I can have the next slide? This is where our programs are organized. Leadership and operations is an important part of our work because we want to increase our capacity. We do watershed program, soil health management, forest health program, and then fire preparedness and resilience. So I'm going to go through each one of these. And so if I could have the next slide? First, there's leadership and operation. When we found ourselves in a bad situation, we hired some professionals. So what you have is a board of six people, average age well over 70, trying to manage a half-million-dollar business. And to increase our capacity and get to the point where we could hire a full-time executive director, we hired consultants. And the people that found us and we found them were Jade Conservation Collective. And this is an organization of people with decades of experience in running RCDs, Resource Conservation Districts. And I know that Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Simon have worked with some of the individuals from Jade Conservation Collective, Megan McClure, Kristen Murphy, and Alyssa Robinson. And they helped us build and train our staff. We've taken on more part-time employees. And they have trained our staff, including Alma De Parrez, who is our administrative assistant. Alma came on board about a year ago into a sleepy little RCD, has witnessed an increase in her responsibilities and, and the work that's required of her as we have grown. We have looked at partner input and we look forward to hiring a forester and an executive director. In fact, we just approved the, the advertisements for those, for those hires. We look forward to a five-year strategic planning session very soon. Next slide, please. I wanted to talk about the watershed program, which is a longstanding program at the RCD. Most of this was accomplished by Greg Dills, who for decades kept the RCD afloat and cooking, along with Linda John Tunnan, who I'll mention later. It currently, we are working on oak reforestation in Trailside Park in Middletown for Caltrans. We had accomplished last year, the 16 acre restoration in Eight Mile Valley. So this was reconstruction of a stream. But we're doing oak reforestation for Caltrans. We're also doing revegetation and fostering, and fostering of native plants for Caltrans on Highway 29. So Trailside Park and Highway 29 work for Caltrans. We are also working from money channeled from the county, from the California Department of Food and Agriculture, for the eradication of goat rue. And that's not a picture of goat rue, that's lupin. But goat rue is also a very pretty plant, but it's a problem. It got that name because it's poisonous to goats. I've chewed on it and it survived, so it's not a goat. The next is a restoration of the wright wetlands. This is a piece of property in Southern Lakeport that we want to restore to its condition as a wetland. We want to save the world one swamp at a time, as my wife says. And we want to thank the Lake County Land Trust for partnering with us in this, this effort. This is money from the Wildlife Conservation Board, which is part of the California Department of Food and Wildlife. And it's being channeled from our statewide Association for Resource Conservation Districts. I want to applaud a member of our working board, that's Mary Jo Velazquez. She's working on this wright restoration. This is Greg Dills, who I mentioned already, Larry Ray, who is our project coordinator, and Scott McLean, who is our field technician. In other words, he's the guy that does the actual work. Next slide shows the health program of the soil. And this is deep roots for RCDs. Before we resourced conservation districts, we were soil conservation districts. And so it's always good to return in strength to the soil effort. We've joined the North Coast Soil Health Hub. We've connected well with other North Coast RCDs. We have soils expertise available to us through Jade. And we have two grants from Conservation Works, which is a nonprofit in the North Coast. We'll be doing some on-farm research and regional demonstrations. And we have from Clerk then bestowed a regional conservation planning partnership program that Clerk felt would, that would fit us a little better. So we're going to bend that to some soil work. We also look forward to future contributions to the Lake County Climate Action Plan. Somewhere in there, the RCD will have input so that we can begin carbon farming, carbon plans for farms, for vineyards, and for orchards in Lake County. We want to think of soil as something additional to what we traditionally think and think of it as a carbon sink. So that's where we're headed. Next slide, please. This is a shot of Soda Bay Road where we'll be doing some clearing. Our work in Forest Health Program, our recent work began with the sale of 250,000 conifer seedlings in 2016 and 2020. And the RCD sold these to people replanting in the fire footprint of the valley fires and the fires that followed it. This was a donation of $60,000 from the Lake County Rotary Clubs in this effort, and it was a multi-year effort. Currently, we are doing technical, technical assistance to private owners of forest lands. And technical assistance means management plans, it means monitoring progress of plantings, but it also means assistance in the paperwork and assistance in getting the money from government agencies that are involved with reimbursement of private people. So technical assistance sometimes involves a pen and a pencil. We look forward to future workshops. We have $250,000 coming from the Nat, the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Our local representative for the NRCS is Erica Lundquist. So she's very much involved in this technical assistance work. We also have secured a $375,000 grant for forest health and fire resilience projects from CalFire. The folks doing this work are Thomas Bendor, who is our forester, Kevin Solent, who is a new forester to us, been with us for about a year, and Ren Ward, who is a forest technician. Looking over those young foresters is an old forester, Jim Bridges, who is a retired registered professional forester, and he's, he serves on our, on our board. We've put him to work too. Next slide. This is fire preparedness and resilience. This, of course, has become more and more important to the RCD in the last decade. And the person connected with this more than anybody else is, is Lori Hutchison. And Lori Hutchison's work is supported through the county from money from Title III, the National Forest Service, and that is to the tune of about $30,000 a year. We're working on a new contract for that work. This work centers around fulfilling the promise of the CWPP. And the CWPP was produced in part by the RCD and the efforts of Linda John Tunnan. So we wanted to mention her along with Lori Hutchison. Hazard mitigation work and roadside clearing, we just completed a grant, $65,000 grant from PG&E. It is a joy to work with PG&E. They're a corporation and corporations pay much quicker than the government, much quicker. So it's, so we're finishing that project for PG&E. We are not involved in home hardening, but we trumpet the clause for the grants that involve that on the website for, for the Fire Safe Council. Okay, if I could have the next slide? This is a reminder of what the LCRCD is. It's a special district of the state of California, and so it is not a nonprofit. It is not a corporation. It is not a limited liability concern. It's the government. It's- It's a non-regulatory arm of the government, and we have special relations with federal, state, and county government. We have profited greatly from our standard agreement with Caltrans, and we hope to form a standard agreement with CAL FIRE as well as we go forward. And the next slide, wrapping this up, is a list of our partners. And there you have a little lake of acronyms, and I tried to fill those in. The thing about our partners is that we would not get very far without them, and we hope in the years ahead that they won't get very far without us. And the organization has now some 17 active grants that we're pursuing. And we still keep up with our educational outreach. The Board of Directors has two field days, one in Middle Creek and one in Cache Creek for fourth graders, and scholarships for 12th graders and sophomores in college, and also workshops of various types. This work is accomplished by Shula Shoup, another director, and Kate Schmidt-Hopper, and I help a bit there, too. So we're still reaching out to the community. We're still raising trout in classrooms with the help of our associate director, Tony Blyleven. So trout eggs turn into trout fingerlings in classrooms, into eight classrooms throughout the county. And then the students are involved with releasing them into the natural environment. So we're taking care of the small fry in all types. Thank you for your attention. I hope you have some questions.
I'm so glad you're here today giving this update. You know, when I first came on three years ago, one of the first things we did is sit down together and try and figure out how we were going to grow capacity for the RCD, the Fire Safe Council, and the Risk Reduction Authority. And we went in many, many circular and spiral and messy conversation directions trying to figure this out. And it's, where we are right now is miles away from where we were this time last year and three years ago. And, you know, when you made that call to me, I think it was last January, and said, "I found someone to start working," and that was Megan with Jade, everything has fundamentally changed. We've partnered on so many grants, and we have so many big plans that some of them we're going to talk about a little later today. I'm just so excited, Dr. Lyons, your commitment to the RCD and the county. I'm glad you didn't give up, because we wouldn't be here without you. And I'm just so incredibly grateful for the collaboration we have with all of these partners, and that you're always there, and you're always creative and willing to do whatever idea we come up with. You're always on board and want to help. And the staff that we have with Jade and with the RCD now is making huge strides and huge changes and really pushing us in the direction that we have to go to deal with the climate issues that we're seeing on all fronts. So thank you for being here, and thank you for continuing the work. I'm incredibly grateful to you.
Thank you. And I want to say that this board that I work with and the employees and the Jade folks are a joy to work with. There is a warmth to our meetings, and so it is fun to continue.
Anyone else? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the excellent presentation. If I were to offer one smallest constructive criticism, it's like, tell us where to find you. Tell us these good things, because I'm going to want to hear more, and I'm going to want to drill down to this. So I'm just going to skip. It looks like your website is lakercd.org. As I recall, you may have a small office down at the Ag Department on Lakeport Boulevard, and it looks like the telephone number is 263-4180.
Sounds good.
For general outreach. And there's other contacts on the website. So there is additional information. The slide deck that you just presented would be a lovely addition to that. So thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the hard work, not just you, but all your fellow directors on the board.
That's for sure. And keep in mind the directors, and thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Green.
Supervisor Swiatek.
Dr. Lyons, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm glad you brought up the trout fry at the end. I was going to ask, because usually you bring pictures of the classroom environment, and that started again even post-COVID, that's continuing that project, which is awesome. One of the things that you seem to have glossed over, and I got to ask, you were talking about your struggles with money, but you didn't mention the big million-dollar amount for 2425. Are those prospective dollars on grants that you're looking to obtain, or do you know if you've already obtained some of these funds for?
We've obtained most of these funds, and it has to do with the APGP program. It has to do with another forest health program and National Association of Conservation Districts. There's bits and pieces coming together. There's no one giant grant, but several different ones.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Well, what we've been doing is strategically planning out our grants so that we can have the RCD manage projects and thereby build the capacity for the RCD. So a lot of the grants that we've been applying for are layering on each other and helping all of the organizations and partners. So that's why when we have an idea for a grant, everybody comes together, we work on it, we really work on it, and make sure that we can have all of our projects and priorities strategic so that we can get the grant award. And then we can have these funding opportunities for the RCD and the Fire Safe Council, and next, the RRA, which we'll get to a little bit later today. So it's not just one grant for one organization. The RCD has been writing grants for the county over the last year. So, you know, we've been really successful through all these partnerships.
We have been very careful about counting our dollars, because we want, we're advertising for an executive director and another forester. And so you don't want to hire someone that you don't have money for. In many cases, in the last few months, we have applied for grants with positions, ghost positions. In other words, the people needed to do the work didn't exist, and we were lucky to land the foresters, forest technician, and the administrative assistants. So to me, that's a little scary, to ask for work without someone to do it, but so far we have played that game well.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it's a game that you have all played.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor, Vice Chair Simon?
Yep. I just would like to thank you, Harry, and the RCD for all the work that's being done. You know, as we, when I came on board and we started a lot of these conversations, the big conversation was the CWPP. And you kind of glossed over that today. I know the dollars are important, but CWPP being completed, updated, and moving forward really helps us, as you said, even in the grants that Lori's working on and everything, you know, following through on what needs to be done here in Lake County as far as the CWPP. So that was a very big accomplishment, and it is a collaboration effort. You've attended every RRA meeting as RCD representative as we move through these processes. We have our climate resiliency officer, and to see the collaboration and the coordination that's happened is, it's exciting. We're almost there. We've got a lot more work to do, but we're moving in the right direction. So I just want to thank you. From day one, when I got to take my tour with you as a supervisor, I understood your commitment to the county and the organization that you're a part of, and all your board members. Just want to thank you very much, and thank you for the report today.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I want to open it up for the public. Looks like we've got someone here.
Hi, good morning. Is this on? Okay. Terry Luxon, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison. And I've worked with Dr. Lyons and the RCD for a number of years. I did not realize how dire it was a few years ago, so you may have heard me gasp a moment ago, because I can't imagine Lake County without a Resource Conservation District. And the sea change that has happened since working with Jade Conservation Collective gives me such hope. It is amazing to work with your staff and consultants, and I wish you all the best, and I look forward to continuing as we work on climate-related issues. So thank you for this presentation.
Many aspects of the grant for the climate adaptation planning involves environmental justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the consultants are very good about that. There's another thing that the Jade Collective is good about, is they do not see their role as permanent. They want to get staff on board so that they can disappear and go on somewhere else. So both of those items are encouraging. The diversity aspect and then the temporariness of their assistance.
Do we have anyone else in the chambers? Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. Well, any final thoughts from the board? Thank you so much, Dr. Lyons, and I'm sure we're going to be talking a lot more over the next week. I think the next grant is due Wednesday, so we've got a lot more work to do.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Okay, our 6.5 item, 9:30 a.m., Presentation of Partnership Health Plan Expansion and Lake County Partnership Health Ordinance Update. This is from Health Services, and we have our partnership group here. And Dr. Duhon, do you want to come on up here? Are you coming up, Kim? All four of you, we have floor chairs.
Morning. Do you have a presentation?
Yeah.
If you want. I have no chair.
Your AV people do remarkable camera work. We have a lot to learn from them in our Zoom meetings.
Award-winning.
Oh, that's right.
Well, good morning. I think we should start with introductions. So yes, you do have some of the partnership crew here. I'm Lynn.
You want to pull the microphone a little closer?
Sorry. I'm Lynn Skurri. I'm Regional Director with Partnership Health Plan. Been with the plan many years, long background in public health, and have focused really on four of the 14 counties in partnership, which includes Lake, Mendocino, Sonoma, and Marin Counties. So spent at least a decade working with Lake County and have lots of great relationships and am really pleased with the opportunity to meet with you all. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Duhon.
Well, I'm Dr. Duhon, your Public Health Officer.
Kim Tangerman, Deputy Director, Public Health, and Vice Chair for the, current Vice Chair for the Board of Partnership Health Plan.
I'm Marshall Kubota. I'm a family physician. I'm Regional Medical Director with Partnership Health Plan, the same region that Ms. Skurri described, the Southwest Region. Been in the area since 1979, when I trained as a family physician at the then Community Hospital in Sonoma County, and have worked not only in Sonoma County, but have worked in Lake County as well, both with Adventist and Mendocino Community Health Centers at their Lakeview Health Center for, I guess I worked for over a decade there. So thank you for having us here today.
So we would like to make this, you know, informal if possible, so want you to be sure and ask questions if, along the way. Some of you are very familiar with Partnership Health Plan, and some of you might not be. So, you know, don't hesitate to ask. So today, we're going to provide just a brief update on Partnership Health Plan. It's been several years, I think, since we met with the board. The pandemic seemed to have delayed just about everything. And we're also going to talk about the appointment of Dr. Duhon as one of our commissioners, and review the revised county ordinance between Partnership Health Plan and Lake County to, that's being revised to accommodate the expansion of 10 additional counties. And as I said, you know, don't hesitate to ask questions along the way. You know, healthcare is complicated, complex, we know that. So just briefly, a little bit about partnership. We are currently in 14 counties, expanding to 24 as of January. And if you look at the little map there, the blue counties are currently where we're operating, and the green are the expansion counties. So that will bring us to really covering the Northern California and 24 counties. And we really, I guess, specialize somewhat in rural healthcare. There was a question about, does managed care really fit in a rural setting? And we feel it does really well and have a lot of expertise in working with rural communities. So we're very excited about the expansion. Important to note, we are a not-for-profit public plan, and with that, we try to make sure that we have very low administrative rate, less than 5%. And that's important, because that allows us to put more of the dollars to providing services and also reimbursing our healthcare providers at a rate that's significantly better than Medi-Cal. And the importance of that is really for access. Local control and autonomy, we're going to talk a little bit about that. But the Board of Partnership, Board of Commissioners, is made up of representatives from all of those counties. And with the expansion, we're having to do a little revision to our representation. We'll talk more about that. And community involvement, you know, when people think of a health plan, they, I think they kind of think of Blue Cross. And we are completely different. I consider us a public health, health plan, not-for-profit, and we are really here to work directly with the communities that we serve. And I know Bruno and I have been in many meetings together, and Moak, and others, and we've worked with Kim Tangerman and actually Dr. Duhon in several of her roles. So we really appreciate, and that's the most exciting part of my job, is working really with the communities. So with that, we'll just kind of keep moving on. There's a little bit about the timeline. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, but started in 1988 with a single county and expanded along the way, adding counties as they became interested. And we only expand when the counties want to join partnership. And in 2013, Lake was part of our expansion. I was very active in that, and, you know, I think it's been very successful. And again, our, I think, what I believe will be our final expansion in January of 2024, we'll adding those additional 10 counties. And many of those have been waiting for years to move into partnership because of some of the things that we mentioned. One last slide, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kubota. Our mission is to be, to help our members in the community be healthy, and we're going to talk a little bit about some of our metrics. I personally love data, so wouldn't be a presentation without a little data. And we really want to be the highest-regarded plan in California. We currently have about 680,000 members in those 14 counties, and that will grow to about 840,000. About 31% of the residents in those counties are represented by Partnership Health Plan. So about 1 in 3 people that you meet are part of our health plan. In Lake County, that's about 50%, so we're really a significant part of the healthcare system. Any questions? All good? Great. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kubota to talk a little bit about some of the health plan's priorities.
Yes, so come just a little over a month from now, Partnership is going to take on the state Medi-Cal contract for an additional 10 counties. Again, we were invited in. They wanted us, actually, many of them wanted to have us back in 2014, but at that time, we didn't feel we were capable of doing so. And we did have our expansion. Subsequent to that, they've, these additional 10 counties have continued to ask, and the opportunity did come up for them to join a partnership. And we turned on the, turned the switch. And we turn on the, turn the switch on and been doing much to prepare for this. That switch turns on, January 1st. Always good to have such a big change on a holiday. That's just the way the calendar, calendar works. But come January 1st, we'll be adding these 10 county, 10 counties, hundreds of health centers, hundreds of thousands of new members, hospitals, clinics, DME providers, and other healthcare providers will join the Partnership family. We are adding regional offices as well. We do have our main office in Fairfield. Lynn and I are in the Santa Rosa office. We have one in Eureka and Shasta. We'll be adding, in Reading, we'll be adding two more regional offices to take care of this 10-county expansion. So a high priority area for us. Medi-Cal redetermination, as you know, people were added to the Medi-Cal roles throughout the pandemic years, and nobody was taken off the roles during that time because of the difficulties with the COVID pandemic. And so the roles, enrollment grew throughout those years. Now, with the end of the public health emergency, Medi-Cal and the state has begun redetermination and that every, as the role of the month of the original enrollment comes up, they have to undergo redetermination now to see if they still are eligible for Medi-Cal. And that goes many different ways. Most are, but some have left the area. Many individuals lost their jobs early in the pandemic years and will put on the Medi-Cal and Partnership roles during that time, but have subsequently gotten their jobs back or new jobs and health insurance that way, and so are also not eligible for Medi-Cal. So individuals who moved out of the area, individuals who re-acquired their healthcare insurance, and unfortunately, some of whom, of course, have passed away, all have to be taken off our roles because we should not be responsible, the state should not be responsible for them at this point in time. However, it is also important that those individuals who, for two or three years, have not undergone the paperwork of redetermination, do so, so they maintain their eligibility. We, the county health departments and their eligibility offices, Partnership and all the various clinics have been very active in getting the individuals to fill out the proper paperwork to maintain their Medi-Cal benefits. There are, very easy on extending, so long as we can get in contact with them and they begin the process, that we're very patient, the state is very patient in keeping people on the roles. CalAim was a large expansion of the Medi-Cal benefit that went beyond what would strictly be considered medical care. It went, began to go upstream because we know upstream care of the populace adds up to savings in the medical side. Medical side is one of the higher expenses. So the more upstream you can go to take care of the populace, the better you do in saving money downstream in the healthcare side. So that includes a couple of major areas. One is the, the complex care management. These are the individuals who are the most costly for healthcare and paying closer attention to them to avoid healthcare costs, hospitalizations, rehospitalizations, things along those lines. And the second are what we call the, the community supports. And these are very wide-ranging supports that are sort of non-medical in nature. They include things like rent, not rent support, but support for rental, that has its navigation, finding places, it's difficult, sometimes paying the initial deposits. We don't pay rent, but we will help with the initial deposits. Housing tenancy. Oftentimes, these individuals have not, have been homeless, they don't know what it means to pay rent, pay utilities, and they can lose housing very quickly if they don't understand that. We help out with that type of navigation. And many other areas like this medical foods for people with diabetes, chronic kidney disease, hypertension, and the like. And then soon, we'll be working with the justice system, and that has to do with that transition from incarceration to, back to the community and make sure that there's a continuum, that we pick up the healthcare, that individuals lose Medi-Cal when they're incarcerated, and that we have a smooth transition because that first month out of incarceration is a very tricky month, and individuals oftentimes, you know, fall into ill health as a result. The juvenile justice system, individuals, children as well, and foster care and the like will all become part of this community supports. So CalAim is a very broad area of work and a major initiative for Partnership at this point in time. We're working with all of the counties, the nonprofits as well, within all these counties, the public health departments or the health, the health departments to utilize this benefit to its maximum capability because we know it is better for our communities. Workforce development, you know, if anything is the weak point in rural healthcare, it is workforce. All the way, the entire workforce in a community, whether it's in a hospital, a nonprofit organization, or the clinics, all the way from the front desk to their clinicians, all are very difficult in, and magnified in rural communities. We know our rural healthcare communities work tremendously hard. They work short-staffed, and that this is one of the weakest points in rural healthcare is, is access and is workforce. So we'll talk a little bit about our recruitment, recruitment that we do. Transportation is a Medi-Cal benefit, and when you have counties with a big hole in the middle, like Lake County, transportation is really important. But, you know, this includes transportation, you know, we cover up to Modoc, Siskiyou, and Del Norte Counties, all the way down to the Highway 80 border soon. And when somebody needs transportation, say from Alturas to UC San Francisco, Partnership provides that. Partnership provides, oh, in 2020, over 800,000 trips, and that number is growing. And so it's an important linkage with our members, our patients, to acquire health, the proper healthcare. And that's not just the long journeys. This journey is within a town. It can be journeys to dentists, to substance use disorder treatment pharmacies, as well as their hospital, well, as well as their clinics and the like, and Partnership can provide transportation for those without the means themselves. And then in the future, in 2026, is, we become a Medi-Cal Medicare program as well. We don't do Medicare right now, but for those individuals who are eligible for both, Partnership will have to develop, and this is a state mandate for all organizations like ours, will have to develop a Medicare product as well for those who have Medi-Cal. As you might imagine, it's basically a new health insurance program, and so we'll be, we'll be very busy with that as well. The next slide. If we look at our provider network, that's the next slide up, please. Thank you. There we go. So we contract with all willing and able Medi-Cal providers with the, with the state. And so, you know, so we have a very broad network of both private and public Medi-Cal providers in any county. We really work to maintain and develop this provider network. We have local representatives for every county. Lake County has, has its own representative to help stay in contact with all our, all our contractees to provide, you know, face-to-face help. They make regular calls, and of course, we're there and here on a regular basis to make sure that things run as smoothly as possible. We have a call center, and we know how frustrating, we all know how frustrating it is to get on the phone. Partnership prides itself in that over 99% of calls to claims and billing and to a very high as well for our members with the, with the member services, that phones are answered live voice extraordinarily fast, most of the time within a minute. People are not put on hold, we know that, those are missed opportunities. And then we also provide kind of scorecards, this is from the business side, for our different networks and clinics, about how quick the turnaround, any problems with billing, because we know those cycles should be as short as possible, and how important that is for their finances. Many of our smaller rural clinics are really paycheck to paycheck. Next slide. As we mentioned, workforce development is extraordinarily important to us and to, Partnership provides a recruitment program that, that provides cash bonuses to, to clinicians who move from outside the partnership network, and that we don't play musical chairs, that's of no real benefit to the area, into Partnership. That, that can include travel, it can include moving, and it includes actual cash, cash enhancement of whatever salaries they, they are, they are provided with the, by the health centers. And you can see that the initial pilot was 750,000, and now it's, has increased multiple times. It increased this last year to a larger bonus payments. And it includes not only coming, but it includes staying as well, that those bonuses are spread out over years, and they actually increase over the years that individuals stay up to five years, and that Partnership has, has invested $9.3 million to date. And so you can see that it has provided a number of successful offers to date to attract healthcare professionals to the area. So again, high priority. We know it's one of the difficult and weak points in, in the healthcare area.
So I will present one slide and to share with the supervisors the many reasons that I was very motivated and excited to join you and to serve as the health officer. One of them was to, to be able to work with Partnership Health Plan. The health plans across California make a huge difference in public health, and Partnership Health Plan, in my opinion, is an outstanding health plan. So I'm really, we're very, very fortunate to have Partnership Health Plan in our county. So about the demographics, we have about 35,000 members in Partnership Health Plan in Lake County, so these would be people with Medi-Cal coverage. And approximately 50% of the county population are covered by Partnership Health Plan. And it's, Partnership Health Plan is responsible for providing most medical services to these members, with a few exceptions, for dental, specialty mental health, and substance use disorder services. So those are carved out. But most other medical services are provided by Partnership Health Plan through the funding. And Adventist Health is the largest provider in Lake County and followed by Lake County Tribal Health. So as mentioned, this will be coming up later, but the prior Health Services Director, Jonathan Portne, was one of the commissioners, and today will be brought forward to have me fill that role. Thank you. So any questions? Supervisor, spot to you.
Thank you for the presentation and good to see you all again. The, actually, since you're going on the slides, if you can go back to the workforce development, I think you said 9.3 million invested to date. I'm just wondering what the flexibility of that is. For example, I've been working with our fire districts and our hospitals, and hopefully, starting in January, I think it's still planned for that, we're going to start EMT course with the high schoolers, so that by the time they graduate, most of them will be 18, or you can take the test when you're 17 and get certified at the age of 18. Love to see more of those types of programs to grow our own, rather than to continuously bring in from the outside. Is there a way of investing those dollars locally for educational programs to bring in? Like, for example, we don't have a nursing program here in Lake County. Difficult to get there, it's a lottery system, it's already difficult when you have access to one, let alone when you don't have access to one. Is there those types of possibilities and those dollars that are available for you for investment?
Well, the program is fairly, well, it's fairly straightforward right now, and it covers physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and behavioral health providers. We have, on occasion, done special programs for training of community health workers and others. So, you know, we've expanded the program significantly this year to address the needs. So right now, that's not a focus, but we are very interested in supporting Grow Your Own and looking at ways that we can, you know, obviously, work further upstream as encouraging students to go into those programs. So, for example, for a physician, we just recently added OBs as a part of qualifying for this. It's 100,000 signing bonus paid over five years, and that's where the retention piece comes into it, is sometimes you can, you can, you can recruit a physician, but they won't stay, or a provider won't stay. We're really trying, as a collective community, to try and help them develop roots in their, the community and stay. So I think those are really good ideas. We talk a lot about how we can support those areas. So happy to discuss further. I think your EMT program is great. We want youth to be, you know, really focused and taking advantage of some of the amazing careers there are in healthcare.
It's definitely an open door for other avenues.
There's two additional provider types, really were part of the presentation, but community health workers that you might have heard about are now a provider that can be, their services can be billed to Partnership and reimbursed. This is huge. And another really important provider's, doulas, that can support women prior to birth and after birth for 12 months. So amazing benefits. We're just starting to get those folks kind of trained and figuring out how to bill because, you know, Medi-Cal billing is, well, health billing is not simple. But anyway, so lots of exciting things happening as we really look at broadening the way we provide health services, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Green, did you have a question?
Yes, there's some more slides, right? So I just want to make sure. Okay. So just to share, thank you, Partnership. Was a happy customer during my times when I was not gainfully employed as much as I am today. I was happily double insured for the first time in my life because the state did keep people enrolled, and now I am thankfully disenrolled. But, and I've always had excellent service, no matter what. But I have struggled from time to time, and I think some people do, with just the very basic understanding and the difference between a health plan, be it Partnership or Anthem, Blue Cross, and providers. And, and sorting around various providers and going in and out of network and not really knowing every single time whether I'm supposed to be picking up the phone to call Partnership, whether I'm supposed to be dealing directly with a provider such as Adventist Health or Sutter Health and all this network stuff. So I don't want to, like, belabor that because it's not part of your presentation here today, but can somebody give me that 30-second elevator speech, if only for the benefit of the public? I'm glad you're expanding, and it's a great big health plan, but can you distinguish between the health plan that Partnership is and the providers that operate under that health plan? 30 seconds or less?
30 seconds or less. So we are the insurance plan, and we have the, the list of benefits. We provide the benefits, some of which are required by the state, others of which we have enhanced because we see the upside of providing those particular benefits. So we don't directly provide any care. We have no care offices, but we work with the members, we work with the providers and to make that access as quick and simple as, as possible. One of the things about Partnership is that all Medi-Cal members are initially, and most all, are assigned to a health center so that they already have a clinician. all, are assigned to a health center so that they already have a clinician or health center that is interested in their care and they should take advantage of that. They have somebody who is supposed to look after their healthcare. We do that assignment. You can change your assignment if you want to because you may or may not, may not be convenient or they don't work with you as well as you would like, but you're assigned to a health center. They are paid by partnership to take care of you. So we provide the assignment and the payment. The health centers provide the care.
And I think regarding navigation, we're all, we're health professionals. You know, this is how I spent my whole career. It's very complicated and that's where member services can come in and they're trained to help people answer questions and help navigate the system. Our system is fairly straightforward, but not always. But when you have multiple sources of coverage like those Medicare, Medi-Cal folks, that's really complicated and everybody needs, I think, help navigating or if you have commercial insurance. So yes, calling member services, asking for help, they will help navigate.
We provide all our materials in key languages and are available in multiple languages on request. We have translation services that are available. Live translation services are also available through partnership and made available to all of our contracted clinics as well. Live video translation and of course, that includes ASL and we have large font, we have Braille, we have all, we try to communicate as well as we can with all our members.
So we have some great quality highlights that we'd like to share, of course, data. So we're going to move Matt on because we're, I know we're a little bit short on time.
Yeah, so we have what we call our primary care quality program. It's made up of a number of measures. Many of them are straight out clinical in nature and we bonus, we pay for performance to our clinics. It was well over 24.
32.
32 million to our primary care clinics this last year alone and it depends on how well they do in key areas, both clinically and some administrative areas as well. But we emphasize the clinical areas with a number of different measures. As you can see here, that we compare them to nationwide Medicaid benchmarks. So we're doing the apples to apples to an extent. And Lake County has scored very well. In fact, Lake County continues to rise in their scores. So there's a definite carrot involved in this process because it is hundreds of thousands of dollars here in Lake County for achieving certain goals. And you can see that based on national percentiles that Lake County has done well in blood pressure control, diabetes, colorectal cancer screening, treatment of asthma, and in child visits under 15 months of age. And these scores have continued to rise throughout the time that partnership, there are little variations, of course, with that and COVID certainly put a dent in some of that, but by and large continuing to improve in their scores on a year-over-year basis. And these, the elements of these quality measures are set both by committee that has input from the clinics themselves and pass all the way up through the board of, direct board of commissioners. That's why these positions are important. So it's a, it's a big carrot and it works.
Okay. Now on to the really probably least exciting part of the presentation is the ordinance. And, you know, I think we've talked about it before. It's fairly straightforward with the adding of the, well, actually, we revised the ordinance when Lake County joined with eight other, seven other counties in 2013 because our board is just getting too big. It's about 30 now and with the additional 10 counties, we'd be a 40, 45 member board, which is just really not feasible. So we are having to, we had a committee of the board that met. I don't know, Kim, if you were part of that, that really came up with a revised representation structure. And so some of our counties will be losing a board seat and Lake is included in that. You can see the new formula up there. We also expanded our consumer seats from two to three. So it says eventually it's a 24-member board. I apologize. It's a 38-member board. That will be when all of the, when all of the terms are sort of worked out, we will have a 38-member board and positions are actually reduced when they, when their term is up. So no one will be asked to leave until their term is up, so at a point of reappointment. The next slide just shows the allocation of board seats by county and by membership. So it's based on the number of members. And so our current counties will be reduced to having 24 seats. And then as we expand into the next counties, that provides an additional 14, so that's up to 38. The other big change has been that the term of appointment has been increased from two years to four years. It takes, well, Kim can tell you, it takes at least a year to really figure out how the plan works. And so by the second year, you're just hitting your stride. Most people stay on the board for many years. So the four-year term will be, I think, very helpful.
The appointment of Dr. Duen is important because?
Important because? We want, we really like to have a broad representation. She's taking Jonathan Portney's position and if she is, if she's appointed before the end of the year, that will allow her to extend that or accept that term and extend into the next year. So there'll be, while it says eventually there'll be one position for Lake County, there'll be two for the next year. And Kimberly Tangerman is our vice chair, very important position in partnership, really recognize her commitment to taking on that responsibility next year as chairing our board. So very proud of Tim, Kim. I've worked with, we've worked together for many years when she was at Lakeview and so happy that she's with Public Health with us right now.
I just want to be sure that was, Kim is becoming the chair of the board.
She will, she's the vice chair now. She will become the chair next year. Yes, thank you. So that pretty much wraps up our presentation. Any questions about the ordinance or about the health plan or about our presence in Lake County? Be happy to talk about that.
Supervisor Swatier?
Just two quick questions. For Kim's term, when is that over?
So I'm vice chair now. I'll become chair next year. And then there is a year that I'll be, as the chair moves out, they retain that position as the supporter, the kind of the historical, yeah, that's past chair. And so it'll be for sure two whole more years.
Okay. Just to find out the term that's left over still because at one point we will be going down to one. And so that's why I wanted to kind of check and see when that would occur. And then just a quick question for partnership. Sorry, we've met so many times, but on specific topics, do you guys have the ability to advocate for change at the state level or is there any prohibition since you're kind of a arm of the state in a sense that you're working to manage the Medi-Cal program?
Yes, yes, we do. We do advocate when it's appropriate.
Okay. So there, I've had many issues brought to me about the payer mix and the inability to get reimbursed appropriately and making services less and less reliable because of that payer mix. So I think I'll be reaching out to see if there's something that we can work on. Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Oh, yeah. So I just wanted to ask, I was looking at the makeup of the seats and whatnot. The ordinance determines basically how many board seats will be available or is, I understand also that it's the actual, you know, participants that are on the program that you're using as a basis to apply seats. It gives a lot of preferential treatment to the more populated counties, I feel, and that's kind of something we always deal with in rural, rural county America or state of California. So I don't know if there's, you know, like, is there a reasoning for that or is there any discussion about that in your boards or anything like that, board meetings?
Well, you know, this is the Senate versus the House, right? Kind of a question. So yes, the, it is based upon a membership. That certainly seems to be a somewhat equitable way of looking at it. On the other hand, over half of our counties will be rural. So if you were to do the math, rural versus more urban counties, the total numbers on the board of rural representation versus more urban or suburban representation come out pretty even.
Thank you. I was setting a volleyball up for this slide.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public, see if there's anyone in the Zoom room or in chambers who like to give public input. I'm not seeing any. So thank you so much for the presentation today.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you all for working so closely with us. It really has been a lot of, a lot of, very rewarding to work with all the, with the board as well as the many organizations and clinics and providers within Lake County. It's really, really rewarding for us.
Thank you and thank you for joining us today.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Dr. Duen, do you want to stay and give your presentation? We can take a quick break. Yeah, let's do that and we'll come back at 10:30.
All right. Thank you, Jay.
These topics are so broad. I didn't see Hope Rising in there. I didn't see CHNA or things like that. Just want to make sure that you're involved in the groups that already have that collaborative status so that you're not creating anything new. You're not trying to find it. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. I know I've seen public health staff at Hope Rising. There's been a little reworking of Hope Rising since Adventist Health has taken over. Just something that I was thinking about. And then there was a number. I didn't really want to highlight that number in the previous conversation. But you speak of equity. And equity for people, absolutely. Equity across our county to make sure people have access, people are taken care of. No one is lacking that ability to find good health in their lives. But we have an issue of a lack of equity between institutions or facilities. And when you look at the number of partnership members for each major healthcare facility, there's an issue. And that, to me, is something I know that is being worked on, and I'm doing my best not to name names, that is being worked on to rebuild equity in how we're serving our communities and how each facility is serving the community they serve. But I think that public health has a role in that to ensure that our facilities do not close the doors again, like we have in the past, where partnership plan are no longer accepted as new patients. And I just want to make sure that that's something to be highlighted for, in case that's not something that you had intended when thinking of the idea of equity, because our facilities have created also some inequities within our communities.
Yeah, great comments and questions. In terms of the CHNA and the CHIP and Hope Rising, my first period of the plan, the first three months, is really getting to know people, building relationships, meeting folks, and getting invited to committees. So I would love to be invited to be part of whatever committees are involved with Hope Rising or developing the CHNA. And that absolutely is an appropriate place for the health officer. And it comes out under accreditation. Also, when we're working on accreditation, having involvement in those community health needs assessment is important for our accreditation in public health. I mentioned that we have received this about $1.2 million path cited funding. That is going to be very much pulling us in the public health department into even more partnership with, for example, Hope Rising. Because in that grant, there was $450,000 written in for community health workers. And we, as a public health division, are not going to want to start, you know, having a whole community health worker department solo in a silo. We want to do that in partnership and supporting the other organizations that are already using community health workers. So I think as we roll that grant out, and we just received it, we haven't gotten it yet, we just got news that we received it, we have not received the funds, that's going to be a great opportunity for me to get more involved in, for example, with Hope Rising as a specific example, and with the CHNA and the CHIP, the community health needs assessment. Regarding equity and partnership health plan, I'm really, you know, very happy that I will be able to serve on the partnership health plan board. Because absolutely, when, at that level with partnership health plan, there are opportunities for advocacy, including at the level of the state, and it is, and also locally. So I think as the health officer, being able to be on the board of partnership health plan will allow me to do more of that work specifically that you're talking about. But anytime that there is a meeting that you think that it would benefit me to be at, please let me know, because I'm waiting, partly what I'm doing is I'm waiting for invitations. And anything with Hope Rising, for sure, is something.
And if I may continue, I don't know what the board's perspective or view on that is, because we can send you invitations to multiple things, whether that comes to the board for approval of those requests, or if we could do that on a personal level in those requests, or go through our CAO to see if those are appropriate requests. Just because public health meets so many different, like you have housing on here, right? Like, do I want to invite you to a housing meeting? Obviously, I need to triage and figure out what's the best, but at the same time, you are our public health officer that we direct, not me. And so I'm just trying to figure out what the best way would be. And that's why I wanted to bring up Hope Rising today, rather than send you invitations in the past, was to take advantage of the fact that we have a board that can say, yes, this is appropriate or not appropriate type of thing. So I don't know what the board's thoughts are on sending invitations, because I just wanted to check in.
I don't know if we, I mean, I personally feel like we don't need to get board direction for an invitation. If we told you to be somewhere, that's different. So I'm OK with invitations and not having to wait to come before the board. That's my thought.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that also. I tell you, you're going to build those partnerships and continue moving forward. So Bruno brings up some great work that's been done by other agencies in the county. We have our advisory councils also, our appointed councils in each one of our communities. I think all of those are things that you need to be reaching out to. So, yeah, I'm fine with individual invitations coming from Hope Rising. Blue Zones also is doing some great work. I think you need to be at the table, having those conversations, building those partnerships with the grants coming. Yeah, I agree, individual invitations should work fine.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that, because as I'm getting to know folks, you know, I've heard there's Blue Zones happening in Lake, but I have not known when the meetings are. So I would, I think it would be very helpful, if you see a meeting you think it would be good for me to be at, just send me the invitation. And, you know, certainly working through our CAO and if you want to, but I am an open door to you. So, and I really would appreciate having those invitations to meetings you think that I should be at. And also, I do get invited to meetings, like tomorrow, we're having the Clear Lake Hitch Second Governmental Summit. And I really appreciate that I am invited, you know, automatically, so to speak, in my role to some meetings, but I think there could be more.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I appreciate the willingness of my colleagues to throw as much flexibility as possible, but it sounds like we're teetering toward a policy. And I think that standing openness may not be applied universally to all of our other department heads. So I just want to signal that. I like the openness here, you know, and I want the flexibility to have similar ability with other department heads. Speaking of committees, Emergency Medical Care Committee, which is my committee de jour and a challenge, I don't see it specified in your work plan, and I don't think that's an intentional oversight. But my one question about your whole work program might be, given what you've already identified as core areas of concern that you want to tackle, plus whatever invites you get from us and the general public about additional things you want to tackle, have you given some thought or some initial time study thoughts to, you know, what balance of your time is going to be devoted to each of the? There's a lot already on this work plan. And so have you thought about the percentage of the time that you're going to be parsing to each of these? Because I think, I appreciate the vision and the expanse of this, but I also wonder how a single person, you know, within the hours allotted and all that, is going to be accomplish that, plus be open door policy and available for invites and meetings and stuff like that. So have you kind of sliced and diced what percentage of time might go to these various tasks?
Yes, and actually, the LMSA is on there. It's, I don't know if I can point it out on the screen, but it is definitely in there, the work with the, I wrote it as relationship with the strengthen, the relationship with the LMSA under Lake County Interagency and items number three and four. That's been very important work, working on that ordinance. You know, the health--
And I just want to, and I don't want to interrupt, but I am going to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been important work, but it's happened outside the Emergency Medical Care Committee. It's kind of happening on an ad hoc basis. So, and North Coast EMS has been participating in that, that's our LMSA. But I know you've come to one of our EMCC meetings. I know we're not meeting regularly, and we haven't hit quorum in a long time. So I just wanted to highlight the absence of EMCC, which is distinct from the LMSA, and want to make sure that we get some appropriate support for that.
OK, well, that was just my learning curve. That should have been as part of the LMSA bullet. I would have said EMCC and strengthening. I meant that to be one body of work, and I'm learning the distinctions within that body of work of what is agency, what is committee. But my intention is to be fully present for that work and that committee. In terms of how the time is divided for a health officer, I mean, that's why I started out by saying we have 171 over 171 distinct duties. If I had to summarize what the health officer does, it's to be present for all of it and to be available for all of it. And how, and that's why, you know, I'm on call 24/7, 365 at this time, because we don't have a deputy. So it can become a huge amount of work when there's an event, you know, like a pandemic or a fire or an emergency. But otherwise, it's something that you, you know, I'm just doing every day. You know, I'm thinking about Lake County every day. And what rises up in, there's certain of it, certain of the work that is long term, like we, like I said, we just got this large grant from the state, this 1.2 million path cited funding in round two. That's going to be a long-term project. So on that project, we're setting up meetings, we're working together in our division and our department to plan what that's going to look like, what are we going to use the funding on? Because again, that grant was written by Jonathan Portnoy. So he wrote the grant, and now we're material, you know, we're operationalizing it. So some of the work is happening over a long period of time, and that takes time management, just knowing how to keep things going and work on them over time with the team. And other things are immediate responses, where there's an urgency. Right now, we have an urgency around youth opioid overdoses, and how are we going to make sure that we get Narcan into the schools so that there's sufficient Narcan there so that if there is an event and they go to grab the Narcan, that it's there? And also, the issue came up that what if one dose doesn't work? What if you need five doses? Sometimes you need more than one dose, so we need to stock the schools with Narcan. And that's more an emergency response that we're interdepartmentally working on right now. So in terms of how to get it all done, that's the challenge of the health officer, you know, is to juggle all of these different balls and make sure we're prioritizing and then keeping things going and not overcommitting, which is part of the challenge as well, because there's so many things that the health officer can get involved in. And I'm pulled out here, the items that I'm focusing on as the top priorities moving forward.
Any other questions? I'll open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room? And I'm not seeing any hands up. So we'll bring it back. Any final, Supervisor Crandall?
Thank you. Thank you very much for this update. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm really excited about the next year. I know we've got a lot to look forward to, and I'm sure we'll be hearing updates from you often as we go along with these different priorities that you have as we start to make some ground.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in today.
OK.
And you know what? Maybe we'll just get down to your appointment, since we have a few minutes.
Yeah.
OK, 7.5, consideration of nomination of Dr. Noemi Duhon as the second seat to the Partnership Health Plan Board. Do we have any comments from the board?
Just to clarify, so this appointment is to fill the unexpired term of the former health director. And my understanding from the previous presentation is that the end of that term, which would be basically one year after your appointment, that seat will be no more. And then the health services personnel will be the chair of that. Is that right? So this appointment is basically for one year, for the sunset of this second board seat that's going away.
Correct. And then Kim Tangerman, who is the vice chair, will rise up to the chair, and then she will have that one position representing Lake County.
Thank you.
Great. Any comments from the public? Not seeing anyone, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to nominate Dr. Noemi Duhon as the second seat to the Partnership Health Plan Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, thank you so much.
And just for clarification, Madam Chair, it would be the approval of the nomination?
Approve the nomination.
I meant to approve the nomination.
I meant to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
OK.
We almost messed that up for you.
OK, 6.7, 10:30 a.m., public hearing, consideration of proposed negative declaration, IS 23-03, general plan amendment, GP AP 23-01, and rezone, RZ 23-01, for Reynolds Systems, Inc., to change the general plan designation of a portion of the parcel from rural lands to industrial and rezone a portion of the parcel from rural lands to heavy industrial. Location 18649 California State Highway 175, Middletown, APN 01304604. And we have Director Turner.
Thank you. We'd like to request this item be continued for one week. As I was uploading the items onto the board's agenda, I inadvertently uploaded the resolution twice and not the ordinance. And so in order to make sure that the public has sufficient time to review the actual document, we request a continuance on this to the next meeting.
It needs an ordinance?
Yeah, the, it has both a general plan amendment, text amendment, as well as a rezone. And so one is done by resolution and one is done by ordinance.
So what does it look like next week, Johanna?
I like 10.
10 o'clock next week?
Thank you.
OK, do we have any public comment? Not seeing any? OK.
Madam Chair, I move to continue this public hearing to December, is it second?
Yeah.
Fifth, wow, completely off. December 5th at 10 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have three minutes until the next item. Oh, sure. If you think it'll be, yes, come on up. 7.3, consideration of update on department progress on establishing administrative citations and collections, processing for code enforcement violations. And we have Director Turner.
Maria Turner, Director for Community Development Department. We are very excited to bring this update to you, as it was the board's direction that we develop a system for administrative citations and fine processing. This is a time-intensive sort of process that takes a certain level of expertise that our current staff resources do not have. And so we were very happy to find Data Ticket, which is already working in Clear Lake to do the exact same job. And I have the deputy administrator, Shannon Walker Smith, here to give you the details.
Good morning. So as you know, we have been working for quite some time to try to put a system in place to collect administrative penalties and fines. And as you know, code enforcement, you know, has a lot of programs that they're trying to work through in Lake County, illegal dumping, public nuisances, cannabis, illegal cannabis cultivation, hazardous vegetation. And we really have a couple of different tools we can utilize. Abatements, of course, is one of those tools, which then we can convert into liens for cost recovery. But administrative citations is one of the tools we haven't really been utilizing because of the lack of resources to process those citations and do the collections for those in-house. So we have worked through all of the legalities of developing a contract with this third-party data collection service, Data Ticket. And the contract does not require board approval, because it's a small contract. It's a fee-for-service. And so we pay as they collect on our fines that we send to them. They take their fees off the top, and so it becomes, that is most of what gets paid. And, yeah, so they're doing basic collections. It's a fee-for-service. All of the hearings, there is more hearing processes that are involved if a resident wants to appeal a citation. And all of those processes will stay in-house with the board. The company does have the ability to adjudicate some of those hearings, but because of our ordinance and the way that it's currently written, all of those hearings will stay with the Board of Supervisors. And if collections are not made through their regular processes, then they also have the ability to work with us and attach these fines through the franchise tax board, which is another way that we could ultimately potentially recover some of our costs for some of this work that we're doing out in the community. And, you know, we, trying to hit kind of two goals with this, both becoming a division of the county that is more financially stable on its own, but also, we're trying to look to make lasting changes in the county where we would hold property owners responsible for keeping their properties to a certain standard and that there would be consequences if that was not the case through administrative citations. So we're excited, happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Great, this is exciting.
Supervisor--
I could also just add, we wanted to express our appreciation for County Council. They have been very helpful in making sure that this agreement reflects the board's wishes.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I really was excited to see this. I know that's in the municipal advisory committee meetings, the town halls, code enforcement will be present in explaining how this is going to be the inclusion that will help hold our ordinances to effect once this is in place. And so to see it coming forward is really exciting for me. And I know for all of us, because this gives us, like you said, a chance to have lasting changes. And there's ordinances that cover this, but we're just kind of sitting like, how are we really going to get it? You know, and I know that we'll get there. This is where, we're getting to that point where the rubber is starting to meet the road, and I appreciate the work you've put into it.
Supervisor Spatia?
So I really appreciate this being here as a presentation. It's not quite past the finish line yet, but never been so far, and it's been a long time coming, so really appreciate this. One of the things that I'm hoping I can maybe get a consensus from the board is, at one point in the near future, maybe around mid-year budget review or something like that, can we get a review of what the fines are, what that looks like, just to kind of re-review what exact, because all of a sudden, people are going to start seeing these fines. I think it would be good for us to review it. Is it too weak? Is it too strong? Is it just right? And at least making it very public about what those fines will look like. I'm hoping to see this in action within the next three to six months. I don't know if the tax intercept takes a little while to set all that up. I know it took a whole three to six months or something like that for the city of Clear Lake. But the fact is, this is how you hold people responsible to change their behavior. Paying for something that they would have already paid for is almost just taking their responsibility and taking that role for them. This is actually putting teeth onto the ordinances that we have. So very thankful that this is here. Let's push it across the finish line. And if that's possible to get consensus from the board.
Yes.
OK, Supervisor Green?
Has this contract been executed yet?
Nope. I was waiting until you all received the update before I sign.
And that's what I thought as well. I didn't assume that this was past the finish line. I just know that we're getting there. You needed this. It will get there. And I do appreciate, I do, I would like to see, because you're thinking that if the fines aren't working, we would do something to work that administrative--
Just to re-review where we're at with fines.
With our ordinance, right? OK, good.
Yeah, we'd be happy to return and do a review of what the fines are in the ordinance. And we have some work to do. We are planning to sign the agreement as long as there are no outstanding concerns by the board. And then we have some work to do to work through the processes with Data Ticket that will align with the ordinance. And all of those processes and forms and fines will get vetted through County Council as well. And then we'll be happy to bring that back for review and update as well.
OK, thank you. Do we have any public comment? OK.
Just one last question. I know you were kind of relying on the board's willingness and the current ordinance that provides that the board will act as the hearing body for any appeals, but you did mention that they offer adjudication services here. Don't need to go into it today, but I'd be interested in seeing what the prices were on that. Just, I have a sneaking suspicion. We may want to take a look at that somewhere down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
OK, well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
We'll see you back after lunch. Well, that's true. Yes, OK. Do you want to come up, Tom? 6.8, 11 a.m., continued from November 7th, 2023, consideration of proposed findings of facts and decision in the appeal of Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, AB 2301. If you want to have a seat, Tom, and we can work through the conversation that was started earlier in the month.
Chair?
Yes.
I know I've continuously, yeah, so.
Bye.
Once this, it's not for all of them. This is just this project. And I'll just state again, when this, when this whole Scotts Valley Energy Corporation started, I was the signatory on one of the MOUs with Scotts Valley. So, but there hasn't been anything after that. So once this situation's done, I don't have to recuse myself so much. So just giving you that insight, because I know probably it's been a while since I've explained it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development Department. The board, on its November 7th meeting, considered proposed findings of fact for an appeal of a tentative parcel map. During the deliberation, Mr. Jordan, representing Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, raised a question regarding the length of the required half-width road improvements that were a condition of the parcel map. His opinion that was put to the board, which was directed for staff to address, would be if the road improvements were to be for the entire length of the parcel, as it abuts Red Hills Road, or if it was to be limited to the portion of the parcel that is currently zoned rural residential for the housing. I do have a, I did bring a parcel map that we can upload, sort of show the board what we're looking at. The parcel itself, Johanna, you're going to have to help me. Thank you. The parcel map itself will split the parcel into, I think, four new parcels with the resulting, yes, please? The road improvements are not typically marked on the parcel map, so this is a visual aid, just to help the board sort of picture what we're looking at. So while they're uploading that, staff did take this time, after the item was continued to today's meeting, to confer regarding the subdivision ordinance portion that describes the required road improvements. In your memo, you'll find that it describes that the, requires the road improvements by the subdivider or developer of any division or subdivision of land in which any lot or parcel abuts an existing county-maintained road. There's no further verbiage within the subdivision ordinance that notes limitations to just housing-related zoning districts or any zoning districts. We treat the parcel, the project parcel in its entirety as we-- We treat the parcel, the project parcel in its entirety as we develop the conditions for the parcel. So in this case, the code applied would apply to the entire area or the entire length of the parcel that does abut a county-maintained road. Staff was unable to support the, Mr. Jordan's request to differentiate and limit that half road or half-width improvement to be limited only to the portions of the parcel that you'll see on the southern part. You'll see that delineation. It's not quite halfway. It's a little up halfway. And that is, this separates the zoning districts. All of these are rural residential. This is highway commercial. And so Mr. Jordan's request was to limit the half-road improvements to this portion of Red Hills Road and exclude this portion in the highway commercial. Staff was unable to support that request with review of the subdivision ordinance. And I think that the Public Works Director is also joining in Zoom and available for questions. One more thing, there were also non-substantive changes or typographical errors, I think, and an exclusion of a previous portion of the findings of fact. Those are also included, both in your redline version and noted in the clean version as well. It is staff's recommendation that the findings of fact be adopted as presented today with no further amendment regarding the half-width road improvement.
Director De Leon, do you have anything to add?
Good morning. No, I don't have anything additional to add. Director Turner correctly and accurately described the ordinance to you, that the entire frontage of the property being subdivided is subject to that requirement. And we would concur with her recommendation that the improvements be applied to the entire length of the property. Thanks.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, board. And first of all, I apologize for taking your time on this issue. But I think it's important to look, first of all, at the date of that subdivision map that you're looking at, which is October, I believe, March of 2021. That map was done, taking in consideration and looking back at the history of the property. The history originally was zoned agricultural. We have no documentation in our files to indicate when the division between the commercial highway zone and the rural residential zone was created. We do not believe it was our request to have it created. We believe it happened as part of the master general plan update that was conducted by your community development department at that time and approved by your Board of Supervisors, presumably through the Planning Commission. If that indeed is the case, that the division of that property had occurred at that time, and the subdivider at that time would have been the county, not the owner of the property, who again had no knowledge of this division. The first I came across in the knowledge of this division was when I moved for a major use permit to put on a bioenergy plant on the rural residential section. And I say the rural residential section or parcel, because at that time, I was informed that we in fact had two zones, the commercial highway zone and the rural residential zone. So that the map that you have up there today is an attempt to just delineate and show the subdivision only applied to the rural residential area. The commercial highway area, which was always designated as 12 to 14 acres, was therefore delineated to make that distinction. The second argument that I suggest is that when we were talking, the whole intent of a subdivision is to identify any increase in traffic that would be created by the subdivision, not just an arbitrary and compresious division of land or a parcel. When you look at this argument, it was Director De Leon's argument that nine homes would have a significant impact upon the traffic pattern of Red Hills Road, and therefore the request for the total exclusion of that requirement was denied on the basis of that increase. Nine homes, three-bedroom, assuming four trips a day, would be 36 trips a day on that prop, on the use of Red Hills Road, which I don't think is a major increase in the amount of traffic. We always spoke about this subdivision and treated the subdivision as if we were only looking at the rural residential section. We never included or considered that the commercial highway section was part of that subdivision. Again, the vision you see up there was an attempt to document for the first time an action that we believe the county took prior and independent of the approval of the owner of the property. And finally, I think you need to look at the spirit of the law and the ordinance. The spirit really refers to a subdivision of property where there is an increase in the traffic pattern that would be created by that subdivision. And again, that subdivision would, is only the rural residential area that would increase that traffic pattern. And so for these reasons, I believe that the intent. If you look at your ordinance, it talks about a minor arterial road. The document referenced by Ms. Turner does not identify a minor arterial road. It identifies an arterial street, arterial road, and a minor road, but not a minor arterial road. So we're not sure that it totally applies to what we were speaking to today, because again, we believe that it refers only to the subdivision section of the property that we were intending to subdivide and move forward with. And so for those arguments, I still believe that the subdivision action that we want to finalize and move forward with, which your board has said, requires an expansion of the width of Red Hills Road, would only apply to that subdivision section.
Do you have anything to add? Okay. Supervisor Green?
So thank you for bringing the map. I think it highlights some questions at least. So I think, as stated in the staff report, 17-26.6, the literal reading of it would say the entire parcel, including the highway commercial portion, the road widening should apply to all of that. But if we're recording a parcel map that's being subdivided, as shown here, parcel four, three, blah, 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 so it is a parcel split, isn't it?
It's a parcel map resulting in four parcels with a remainder.
So how many parcels do we have there on this map?
You'll have four.
Because the interpretation seems to be a single parcel, and so the code should be applied on that basis. But the action being requested or that was taken was actually subdivided, so the fair
Tentative parcel map is of that entire project parcel. I believe when Mr. Jordan spoke about subdividing, he actually meant to say rezoning. That is one entire parcel in front of you that is being divided into four parcels with a remainder.
I have a point of order. I feel like we are relitigating the appeal versus approving what was stated. What was stated is typing up what was stated in a video. We can watch it ourselves and make sure that that's what we stated. But I feel that now we're creating interpretation and potentially a change of what was stated versus approving the findings, which was a whole public hearing portion of discussing these types of things. I feel like, I just feel like this is not an appropriate discussion. It's an appropriate discussion because you need to know what you're in for. I agree 100% with why you're asking these questions. I just don't feel this is the appropriate venue for us to re-litigate, maybe litigate is not the right term, but to rediscuss the appeal hearing as to, because the appeal was, I don't want to have to build more on this road than I have to. We're back to having that same conversation over again. So I'd like to hear from our County Council.
Yes, so the public hearing for this with testimony took place on September 19, 2023. That portion, that public hearing with testimony has been closed already. So what is before your board today is really the statement of the findings of fact and decision that's derived from that hearing. Points of clarification, typographical errors, I believe those have been addressed. As a matter of clarification, that is for your board's consideration, but Supervisor Espatia is correct that short of actually reopening the hearing and taking in more testimony about this, the appellant applicant has already provided the arguments at that, whatever testimony that was provided back in that September 19, 2023 hearing.
Through the chair, I can only add that my testimony at that time only assumed and understood that the width of the road was relative to the subdivision section, and my discussion at that time and understanding at that time was limited to that. I never had the discussion or understanding that it included the whole total parcel map. So I did not address that sex, that issue until I read the statement. That's before you're to take action today, to understand that you were thinking, and that staff was thinking, that it included the total length of the road. That issue never came up in that public hearing process. And so that's why we're seeking that clarification today, is to get an understanding of exactly what we are obligated to pay for in going through, if we have the ability to go through with a subdivision of the parcel to begin with.
So I mean, I think our findings have to rely on the code as it's written, and we can't.
But I think your findings have to rely on the code as they're written, but also what the spirit of the code is. It would never have occurred or come up if I had not asked for a subdivision of the rural residential section. That zoning area, again, my argument or suggestion is that originally, this parcel, this piece of property should have been divided into two parcels, a commercial highway zone parcel and a rural residential zone parcel. The fact that your staff never followed through with this action to create a map and create that parcel subdivision is something that I cannot explain why it did not happen, but it has not happened. And so with one parcel, when in reality, there are virtually two parcels with two zones that are inconsistent with each other.
Director Turner?
I have staff researching the process that did create that rezone. It is likely it was either in Riviera's area plan or a general plan update. That is typically in those larger plans where county-led rezones of property in the county take place due to community visioning process. We have many parcels that are within multiple base zoning districts because they are assigned according to potential use. And so subdivision does not naturally follow, nor does the county lead subdivision projects based off of rezones.
And Chair Pieska, I'd also like to add that this department, my department, has been consistent in requiring half-width frontage improvements for any division of land. We made our comments as part of the original application. Our comments have been public record since we submitted them to Community Development. They were part of the record that went to the Planning Commission and was approved by the Planning Commission. Frankly, an applicant's lack of due diligence to understand what they're doing is not argument for approving appeals. And this is, this is the same recommendation we make on every parcel map. So I think we're consistent, and to suggest otherwise is not accurate. And we're going to stand by our recommendation that the improvements extend for the full length of the property as required by county code.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any more comments from the board? I will open it up to the public. Not seeing any. Check the Zoom room. Okay. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Chair. Chair Pieska, if I may. If your board decides to move to approve the findings of fact and decision, which is the first recommendation, I would recommend that it move to approve the findings of fact and decision as reflected in attachment to the agenda packet, which should reflect all of the corrections, latest corrections that were made.
So moved. Through the chair. Before you have a second.
Well, we have a motion on the table. So what's, you have a last comment?
My concern again is since Director De Leon has indicated that he's moving forward with a complete widening of Red Hills Road, that the, if you accept your staff's recommendations, that it be modified to indicate that we are only responsible for that section of Red Hills Road that abuts our property. Because right now, the way it is written, we would be obligated to do the whole width of half-width of Red Hills Road, because it reads for the half-width of Red Hills Road instead of for the half-width section of Red Hills Road adjacent to the property.
Not according to Lake County Code, Section 1726.6 speaks to the subdivision of land on which any lot or parcel abuts. So I think putting those two together automatically makes it that it's only based on that parcel. So maybe that language by itself might be vague and may seem like it's larger, but the county code that is providing that requirement for improvement is based on a parcel that abuts an existing county-maintained road.
My only concern is we've always had up to now a difference of interpretation, understanding of what was happening. And I can imagine 10 years from now, the same kind of thing happening, because it may take us 10 years before we find the money to do the half-width section and submit for a subdivision.
And I would suggest.
Lloyd? Go ahead, Lloyd.
Well, again, if it was, if it is a clarifying point, that would be up to staff. That would be Director Turner, Director De Leon. The language that was placed in the findings of fact and decision are word for word directly lifted out of that September 19, 2023 hearing, of which Mr. Jordan was present. The modification made to condition four was lifted from that hearing, word for word.
Should in the future, the Public Works Department try to require the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation to improve the entirety of the length of Red Hills Road, the person representing Scotts Valley Energy Corporation could point to the code where it does state that it is for the length of the parcel that abuts the county-maintained road. It is unlikely such a misunderstanding will take place in the future.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion?
Is that on the findings of fact?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second action?
Move to deny our, yeah, move to deny the appeal?
It would be a motion to grant the appeal in part with condition number.
That's right.
3.4.
So as-is is good?
Yes.
Okay. So I move to grant the appeal in part of condition number 3.4 to parcel map PM 22-02, amended to state, prior to the recording of the final map, developers shall submit payment to the Department of Public Works for the half-width of Red Hills Road, the county-maintained road improvements to conform to the Lake Road Design and Construction Standard 200-A, minor arterial road, or complete the required improvements.
I'm going to second for the purposes of discussion.
All in favor?
I would like to discuss this. So before we vote on this, I just want to make sure, and again, we're not relitigating this. Point taken. We just did the findings of fact. But the statement by staff was that we're relying on 17.26. And if we're going to do it, I believe one question might be appropriate. There is a deferral process contained within there, that when such widening is not currently needed for health and safety purposes or the already development of the surrounding area, a deferral could be, could at least be considered by the Planning Commission or on appeal by the Board of Supervisors. Hypothetically speaking, is staff aware that any deferral has been requested by any subdivider? Have any deferrals been granted for any number of reasons?
subdivide or have any deferrals been granted for any number of reasons as stated in 17.26?
Staff did process that or did consider that as well during the original tentative map process. There are a number of reasons why it is not appropriate, and those were listed, I think, and discussed in the staff report, or at least in agency comments from the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Someone want to grab Supervisor Crandall? We will go to 7.2. Ready? A, consideration of a resolution authorizing application for grant funding under the Regional Climate Collaboratives Program as administered by the Strategic Growth Council. And B, consideration of a draft partnership agreement for the Climate Safe Lake Project and authorization of a designee to sign. And with us, we have our climate resiliency officer, Terry Luxon.
Good afternoon or good morning. Thank you. I'm coming before you with another approval for a big grant. Right now, it's looking like 1.3 or 4 million. It's exciting to consider this to build the capacity. You heard this morning from the RCD, from Dr. Harry Lyons, about their capacity building efforts, and this would continue that. And along with the RCD, it would build capacity for the Risk Reduction Authority. The grant part, oh, I have a presentation. Do you want me to do some slides?
Yes, please.
Okay. You need to eject that. And then do I control it? Okay. Super. Thank you. So it is a grant from the Strategic Growth Council, the Regional Climate Collaboratives. This is round two. We applied last year and barely missed getting it. And so we're applying again this year.
So can you talk about who's funding the grant, the partnership?
The.
Grant writing?
Sure. We have a grant writer that works a lot with North Coast Opportunities. And so Supervisor Pieska's discretionary funds and NCO are paying for the grant writer that I'm working with. Thank you very much. And then the grant partners are the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, Scotts Valley Banda Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, the Lake County Resource Conservation District, and North Coast Opportunities, with the County of Lake being the lead. The Regional Climate Collaboratives Program is a capacity building grant. And what's great about capacity building grants is that's something that everyone's always looking for because it pays for staff, it pays for plans, and, but it doesn't, it pays for equipment, which is great because right now we need staff. It enables communities, well, you can read that, but what we're proposing is to build the capacity of the RRA to plan and implement climate change related projects, create a waste woody biomass utilization and bioenergy biochar development plan, track progress and evaluate grant comes, which is required, as well as peer learning, which is required. And so for the last several years, the Risk Reduction Authority has been looking at how to be a part of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. They have a biomass utilization pilot project. And so objective one of this grant program, which again, comes from the Strategic Growth Council, which is also part of the Governor's Office, is to create actionable plans and projects. A long-term goal, as I was mentioning, of the RRA is to position themselves and the county as a whole to be accepted into the biomass utilization pilot projects of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR. Two of OPR's goals are to manage forests to achieve the state's economic and environmental goals and to create a sustainable woods product market in California. And part of that, which I only know just a little bit about with talking with OPR staff, is what comes with it is a, what's called a BDO zone designation, which is bioenergy development opportunity zones. And it's part of the state's economic goals includes creating these zones. And to receive this designation, one, we would be accepted into the pilot project, and two, we need a JPA or Joint Powers Authority that can oversee biomass utilization and sales of that biomass. And so the slide has a little bit of information about what a BDO zone is. But the most important thing, or the bottom line, the last bullet, is they can help secure our clean energy future. And we know in Lake County with the geysers, the possible train project, and all of our solar, we're moving forward with renewable energies. And so the goal, OPR has developed five project projects to test new mechanisms for developing long-term feedstock contracts. That's a sticking point. And information, they'll provide information and templates from other pilot projects that will be shared broadly to provide a menu of options for broader adoption. And so those are the four highlighted items that the OPR pilot projects want to do, that we want to position the RRA to be able to take advantage of. And that's just a map of the regions. As you see, Lake County over here is not in it, but that is soon going to change. I know it. So again, round one that we submitted last year, the RRA approved to form a collaborative and apply for the round one grant in October of 22, 2022. The task was to create the same as this year. Create a waste woody biomass utilization bioenergy biochar deployment plan and take initial steps to construct the facility. And those task partners, again, last year were Scotts Valley Banda Pomo Indians, RRA members, Clerk, the U.S. Forest Service, TARA, and the RCD. And so this year, under round two, that's changed a little bit because a lot of what we proposed, we being the collaborative, and other agencies have received grants, we've had to change and it's continued to change as our situation changes. And so the RRA approved in July to go for the round two grant. This year, it required a pre-application, and then you, those would be invited to submit a full application. I submitted the pre-application by the due date on September 6, and it was accepted, and we were invited to submit a full application, and it's due next Tuesday, or excuse me, next Wednesday. The RRA voted to pursue funding at a special meeting on November 6 to support RRA staffing and a mechanism to ensure financial sustainability while addressing the overabundance of waste woody biomass in Lake County, which has been a goal of the RRA for years. And so what the consultants and this OPR has done, they created an acronym. We all love acronyms. The California Forest Residual Aggregation for Market Enhancement, or CAL-FRAIM. And so there are, the question that it asks is could a JPA improve forest biomass feedstock supply chains by providing a feedstock supply agreement? That includes a publicly managed price mechanism. So when investors are looking at bioenergy projects, they're looking for a way to sell carbon credits and a way to make sure, you know, you've got a contract for 10 years to get the biomass out of the forest, or out of this neighborhood, or out of the creeks and streams. You know, they looking for the contracts, and that's a missing piece. And so I'm not going to go over in depth the different types of the JPA models, but what we're proposing in the grant is to, because they're, these are very different structures. There's public infrastructure, a services JPA, or wildfire prevention JPA. And I believe our RRA now is kind of formed under the wildfire prevention JPA. And myself, along with Kevin Ingram, City Manager of Lakeport, and Franklin Velarde from Middletown Rancheria are on the bylaws subcommittee. So we're looking at changing that, but we realized we're not Lloyd, we're not lawyers. We need to have assistance. So we're putting funding in the grant for a consultant who can work with the RRA to figure out which of the types of JPA models would work best for the RRA and for the county as a whole. And so the other objectives in the grant are to build social infrastructure, center community engagement and decision-making, and develop equity-centered processes. So those are the four, that along with the others, the four objectives. And so with North Coast Opportunities, as you are aware, is the Community Action Agency for Lake and Mendocino County. NCO is going to plan and implement neighborfests throughout the county that will educate and inform all communities in Lake County about emergency preparedness and more, including giving RRA members, like the County of Lake, a venue to engage in community member, to engage community members throughout the county in, like for instance, the general plan update, or the climate adaptation plan, the evacuation route planning, the surveys that I have to go back out, the work that NCO is doing, Red Cross is doing, and many other agencies, to have the funding to plan these family-friendly events. Because I did several of them over the summer, and they're wonderful. You get a couple hundred people, there's food, there's activities for children, there's games, and there's real education and community engagement. And so the, which is a major goal of the Strategic Growth Council, is to be able to engage the communities where they are. And that's the beauty of the neighborfest. Like we did one in Spring Valley, we did one in the Riviera's. And so they're very hyper-local. And so throughout the adapt, oh, excuse me, let's see, where did I miss off? So before your board next week, I'm going to go over the adaptation planning grant that we were awarded. But we're using one of the deliverables in that grant as an in-kind in this one, which is that the RRA directors and participants will receive diversity, equity, and inclusion training. There'll be a kickoff event and then annually. And so we're going to use that as in-kind in our grant application. And so in summary, the peer learning objective in our grant application, while it's required, is also something that my position, as well as the Lake County Fire Safe Council and other RRA participants are tasked to do, which is getting out the word of preparedness, you know, defensible space, all of the things that we have been talking about, but to do it more and to do it consistently. And this will allow all of the agencies that are doing that work to have a platform to do it. But we will also create a waste woody biomass utilization and bioenergy biochar deployment plan. That includes hiring a full-time executive director and a biomass program manager for the Risk Reduction Authority, which has been the missing piece right since, let's see, Carol, your board allowed Carolyn Purdy and myself to assist the RRA after NCO's contract ended. So she and I did that January, February, and March. And since then, the RCD received funding. And you may have met Elisa, who works with Jade Conservation Collective, and she's been providing administrative support to the RRA since then, about eight to 10 hours a month. But it takes much, much more than that. So to have paid staff, additional staff will be great. And then contract with a consultant to lead the RRA through the process to determine what JPA formation changes are needed, and to assist the bylaws update subcommittee of the RRA to make changes, track progress and evaluate grant outcomes, which is required, and peer learning, which is required. And so that's just an overview of what we're going to apply for to try to help Lake County. And, oh, and then also in your packet is a draft, well, there's the resolution, and then there's a draft partnership agreement template. And the reason it's not more fleshed out is, as I mentioned, it just kind of keeps changing because we've had some really.
Big.
Big news.
News. So Terry and I have been working for the past couple of years, Terry one year longer, to get into this pilot program that she has outlined. And it's already in year two of, and do you want to put the map up? Okay.
That one?
That one. So we have been selected, we got the news last Wednesday, that we are the newest pilot project for the state of California with the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. Yes, we're so excited. We've been working really, really hard to land this and showing the need. We've, we've done a dead tree tour, we've done just about everything possible, and all that effort has paid off. And starting in January, we will probably start to see the first of that funding. So it's absolutely critical that we maintain this path with building out this capacity. We will be receiving support from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, but it won't be enough. We have a lot of catching up to do. The things that they found most enticing that allow us to enter into this later is we already have the JPA in place, we just have to modify some things in the bylaws. And we have a never-ending supply of feedstock, both from our past fires, our forest health projects that the RCD mentioned earlier, and continued fuels breaks and, you know, defensible space and all of the things. So the disposal, the disposal piece has been missing for a long, long time, and this is an opportunity for us not just to complete that piece and find a solution, but to invite industry and really figure out how we can turn this into an opportunity for Lake County. So I'm really excited, but it's going to be a lot of work. So this was an important grant opportunity that we barely missed last year. It's even more important now. So hopefully, the Strategic Growth Council and OPR work really closely together. So that's why we've, we've layered in so many of the things that we've talked about at this presentation and earlier, the conversation continues. We always are strategic in our projects. And last year's focus was on the cap, which we got in funding through the other grant, the APGP grant that we'll learn more about later in December. So I'm just really excited to bring this all to you. And if you have any questions, let us know. And then deadline is next week. Supervisor Spatier?
I think Supervisor Green.
Oh, Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Very exciting. Let's get this done. My only question is technical. I see two recommended actions. I see in the REZO at the bottom of page one, the REZO would appoint the CAO or designate as an agent and signator to execute all documents, including agreements. But on the staff report, there's a recommended action to designate a signator for the agreement coming up. So I guess we could double designate if needed, but my question is if the REZO covers that or if that second recommended action is needed.
So yes, on its face, the resolution should cover that. The second requested action to designate a signatory for the partnership agreement may stem from whatever grant funding requirements there may be in place. And if so, if that's the case, that can be accomplished by motion.
Is there a separate requirement that we can't have this master REZO do it? We have to make a separate finding?
I don't think so. The intent, my intent at least, was to not have to come back before your board for the draft partnership agreement template. So whatever, you know, and we have to submit the resolution with the grant and the draft with the grant, but we don't have to sign the, or send in or with the application a finalized partnership agreement template.
Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, definitely in the right direction in the sense that I know I've been given the RRA a little bit of a hard time about the leadership and the use.
the RRA a little bit of a hard time about the leadership and the use of our county staff. Don't want to stop what the RRA is doing, but definitely want to support in getting the grant funding to get that executive director leadership, because it's absolutely necessary. The work is not just check a box and move paperwork on. It, it's going to require some heavy lifting to get some of these projects moving, especially in the direction that you're looking at to become a broker in the biomass market. So, love where this is going, support it. What I wanted to add, and I spoke with Terry earlier today, we talk a lot in there about firewise communities. There's a lot of stuff about fuel reductions. There's a lot of stuff that, it doesn't specify wildfires within the document, but it's kind of leading towards the idea of such. And I just want to make sure we don't forget flooding, where biomass creates similar issues and impacts. Last year was massive flooding issues for the state of California. We anticipate more of that this year. And I just think it would, if we can add that in there, it would be a potential benefit in reviewing the application and seeing that this provides for both reduction of risk for fire hazard and reduction of risk for flood hazard.
And I think that's a really good point, and thank you for reminding me of it. We recently had a conversation with California Fish and Wildlife about having the seas or the Conservation Corps doing stream bed clearing, and one of the issues that they ran into was what to do with the vegetation they were pulling out. And so, you know, finding a long-term mechanism for just that issue, because we need to do more stream clearing to protect hitch habitat and to prevent flooding, particularly in Scotts Valley, along Scotts Valley Road. And then, we've got the Middle Creek Restoration Area coming up. Yes. So, when it comes to flooding issues, agricultural prunings, crop conversions, there's, there's a lot of biomass that we need to mitigate, and it can, you know, bring income to the county instead of pile burning it.
And in my comments, I don't doubt that we would have taken whatever biomass is available to, to, to move into the direction of turning into biochar, or whatever it is that we'll turn into. It's more of what's the rubric for the grant, and if we add that language in the application, does it help us to potentially reach the number we're looking for in order to not miss it this year?
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Just to add to the vegetation, because we can't necessarily do any work underground or pull roots, it, it does help to just take that vegetation out, because it grows back quickly, just constant. And so, since we're sitting here waiting on permits, and then they get lapsed, and then they move forward because of another, you know, permit not lining with another, this could be a way to, I mean, I know it's a little more work here and there, but it provides more biochar if we can get that from the streams. Yeah. So, I appreciate you mentioning that about the floods.
Yeah. Obviously, glad to have this conversation here today. I know we pulled together the special meeting pretty quickly with the RRA board, because, you know, the conversation needed to happen with the whole board, and it was well-attended that day to help us move forward with this opportunity. So, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think Supervisor Spatia, you touched on the main thing. We've talked about it for years, that executive director position is the missing key. You heard that from RCD today, when they were able to get that accomplished, you know, what leaps and bounds have changed, and we're right on that cusp. We appreciate the support today. I want to thank Supervisor Pyska, Chair Pyska, and Terry for really pushing this down the path to get completed. The OPR news is big. So, yeah, support today from the board is going to take that step, I think, that is really going to move the RRA forward in the right direction we've all been wanting it to go. So, the collaboration efforts that are happening throughout the county are unbelievable. So, yeah, looking for support today.
Yes. And I just want to thank everybody that's been participating in these grant meetings for the last two years. It's been a big push, but having a climate officer now who has this in their job description really enables the county to participate in ways that we haven't been before. So, it's almost been a year since you've been here, and there's just been incredible strides made.
Thank you.
Okay. Open it up for the public. If you have any public comment. Not seeing any in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I offer the resolution.
I will get to that. That's all right. Good.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatia?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska? Yes. Yeah, do the...
Part two?
Yeah.
All right. Falling behind today.
Designate a signatory for the partnership agreement.
Yeah, so moved. Who, CAO? CAO or your designee, should we put it that way?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're so excited.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Good job, Terry.
Next week.
Thank you, Terry.
So, we can do calendars now, so we can get that finished before lunch. So, who would like to start?
Ms. Chair?
Yes. Oh.
Chair, you may want to wish to wait to do calendars till we return back from lunch since the one, 1 o'clock, maybe continue to another day.
Okay. All right. So, we'll come back at 1 o'clock. It's fine. I just thought we'd come back late.